And this is gavel to gavel, WCVW TV's complete coverage of the Richmond City Council. Good evening once again, I'm Dick Harmon. Welcome to our second meeting of the month of March. And don't forget, the schedule, the way it goes now, two meetings per month in January, February, March, April, and May. One scheduled for June, July, August, September. Two for October, one November, one December. And the budget is coming up as well, but we'll get to that in just a second. First off, 20 items on consent, eight items on the regular agenda for tonight. Let's run through those quickly. By the way, we got word that the gremlins have been cornered and will be captured. We should be back to the situation as normal with the next meeting on April 13th. But tonight, you got me once again on camera. Starting off, item number one, ordinance 2014-208. This is to establish a Richmond Archaeological Commission that's been continued until April 27th. Item two, ordinance 2014-217, to establish a downtown tourism zone that's continued till April 13th, or correction, till April 27th. Item three, ordinance 2015-39, this is to authorize 5,000 from the Virginia Commission for the arts for the purpose of providing a grant to the Cadence Theater Company, stays on consent. Item four, ordinance 2015-41, and this is executing a facility use agreement between the city and the Greater Richmond Aquatics Partnership. And this would allow to rent a pool for competitive swim team practice that is being continued for two weeks, actually, three weeks, on the next meeting on April 13th. Item five, ordinance 2015-42, transfers 200,000 from Department of Economic Community Development as for the purpose of providing a grant to Southside Community Development for construction of six houses, and that is to be under the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, that stays on consent. Now, item number six, ordinance 2015-43, transfers 25,000 from the Partnership for Smarter Growth Match and Appropriates to Groundwork RVA Inc. for the purpose of making a grant to an organization furnishing services to beautify and maintain communities, that stays on consent. Ordinance number seven is ordinance 2015-44, and that accepts $197,658 from the Office of the Attorney General for the purpose of using asset forfeiture funds to provide tactical, safety, and protective equipment for the sworn sheriff's office personnel, stays on consent. Item eight, ordinance 2015-45, that concerns establishment of Clean City Commission, continued until April 27th. Item nine, ordinance 2015-48, declaring public necessity to acquire a tax delinquent judicial sale at 1,800 Kraus Street, that stays on consent. Item 10, ordinance 2015-49, this concerns the city's stormwater management program, and that just basically brings us into compliance with state laws, that stays on consent. Now, 11, Resolution 2013-R254, this supports the efforts to settle certain claims by owners' real property abutting at Princeton Creek, that's continued till April 13th. Items 12 and 13 is the enhanced speeding penalties on Chapel Drive between McGuire Drive and Hopkins Road, and McGuire Drive between Broad Rock and Hopkins Road, both continued until the April 13th meeting. Next, we come to item number 14, Resolution Number 2014-R158, develop a program to establish rental inspection districts, and requires inspection of residential real estate property dwelling units within such districts, that's continued till April 27th. Item 15, Resolution 2015-R11, this is requesting an agreement with GRTC to lease the property of the Bus Barn at Robinson and West Carey Public Parking, et cetera, that stays on consent. Item 16, Resolution 2015-R16, this approves donation to the girls for a change for its 2015 date with Dad event of $500 from Fourth District, stays on consent. Item 17, Resolution 2015-R17, this approves $1,780 for the printing and mailing of Second District winter and spring newsletters. Item 18, Resolution 2015-R18, and this was taking my guidelines governing the use of council district funds, this is going to be talking about the procedure they go through, in other words, do we have to bring it up if they're going to transfer $17.65, or something like that? That will stay on consent. And item 20, Resolution 2015-R20, and this is negotiating an arrangement with the school board to encourage the greater use of the Redskin Training Center by athletic teams and public high schools, that's being continued until April 13th. Now, on the regular agenda, item 21, ordinance 2014-199, prohibiting use of certain instruments in the training and control of elephants, that will be amended and continued till the 27th of April. Item 22, ordinance 2015-32, this is authorizing an agreement to relocate wastewater facilities for the purpose of facilitating the relocation and providing for right-of-way recreational use easement, this is for the use of the Virginia Capitol Trail, and that will stay on the regular agenda. Item 23, ordinance 2015-33, renaming City Hall L. Douglas Wilder City Hall, that's been continued till April 27th. Item 24, ordinance 2014-35, this prescribing the main internet webpage of each department, this is concerning the city auditor or other agencies, to include a link to audit reports and information concerning the status and implementation of audit recommendations, that one's being continued till the 13th of April. That was actually originally on consent, got moved to regular, now it's being continued. Item 25, ordinance 2015-40, concerning exemptions for mission taxes, et cetera, this was being continued till the 13th of April, but it's going to be added to the budget papers. And this will be exempting for mission tax for certain housing garden tours that benefit nonprofit organizations, that's going to be put in the budget papers. Item 26, Resolution 2014-R184, this is to cause to be issued a request proposals for the purpose of selecting a development company for the Boulevard site. Now, this took quite a bit of discussion in the informal meeting, and there's going to be two amendments to it tonight. One is instead of a request for proposals, it's going to be a request for qualifications. And the other, originally, it would call for the qualifications to be sent out, a request to be sent out within 30 days, that's been changed to 90 days. They're going to make those amendments tonight, then they're going to continue the paper until the 13th of April for further discussion. So that one amended and continued. Item 27, Resolution 2014-258, this is that decision of the CAR, C-A-R, for the 407 North Allen Avenue, that is going to be continued till May 26th. And then we have one final item on the regular agenda, and that is Resolution 2015-R9, and this is to provide the council and city planning commission with written notification of building permit applications completed for properties identified for acquisition in the city's master plan within seven working days of any such applications. That's going to be amended, but it will stay on the regular agenda with the amendments. So we had 20 items on the consent, we continued seven, so we're down to 13 on consent. We had eight items on regular, four are continued, two are being amended, continued, so we're down to two items there. We have three speakers on the citizens' comment period tonight, and those speaking on economic development opportunity, supporting Richmond Holy School students in the fight against domestic violence, and one speaking on city governance. And those will be the consent of the citizens' comment period. Now, those who are wondering, well, we're into budget time now, when do we get our input? Okay, Monday, April 13th. Budget public hearing will take place during the 6:00 PM formal council meeting, so your public input will be at the April 13th meeting, you need to contact the city clerk's office to get on that list. So that's what we stand for tonight. Now, tonight, kind of a milestone for yours truly, because tonight marks completion of 27 years I've been sitting here. 27 years ago, second meeting in March, it all began. I have seen eight mayors elected from the council, two mayors elected at large, we have had five council presidents, starting with the election of Manola La Posse, William Panelli, Kathy Graziano, Charles Samuels, and now Michelle Mosby, are the five council presidents we've had so far since the new direct mayor went into effect. In the council, let's see, we've had 56 different council members, actually 52 council members, four of them served two terms, and some of them are still, and one is still in their second term, that'd be Riva Trammell. So we've had 56 different seats in the council, I've had 10 mayors, five presidents, and in 1988, when I started, we had the following breakdown of council. First district was Jillian Williams, second was William Lidinger, three was Roy West, who was the mayor at that time, four Drew Gillespie, who was the vice mayor, five Chuck Richardson, sixth district Walter Kenny, seventh Henry Marsh, eighth Claude McDaniel, and ninth was Carolyn Wake. So that is what was going on in 1988 when I started. I have attended so far over 600 meetings of Richmond City Council, and who knows, maybe we'll be around for another 600, we'll just have to wait and see. But it's been interesting, it's been an interesting 27 years, we hope to continue for many more years to come. Now, we'll be getting started with tonight's Richmond City Council meeting in just a couple of minutes. I'm Dick Harmon, stay tuned.
Ready?
This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please provide the Chamber Emergency Evacuation Announcement followed by the Citizen Speakers Guidelines.
Madam President, would you first like to do the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, at this time, we will have the invocation, and maybe that's because I don't have it in front of me, by Reverend Andrew Terry of the Richmond Heel.
Let us pray. Holy and gracious God, you have made each of us stewards of this your city, of its land and resources. Bless this City Council and their work this evening as our representatives. Give them ears to hear your voice, the voice of your people, and each other's voices clearly, and grant them wisdom in their deliberation and decisions. Lord God, you have a vision for this city of unity and our diversity, of health, vibrancy, and justice. Help us to be good stewards of that vision. Amen.
We can now do the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge of allegiance.
To the plan.
Madam Clerk, now, will you please read the Chamber Emergency Evacuation Announcement followed by the Citizen Speakers Guidelines?
Yes. Upon activation of the emergency alarm signal, all persons should immediately exit the building. Please use the exits to the left or right front of the council chamber or the east or west stairwells outside the rear doors of the chamber. Do not use elevators or escalators. After exiting the building, proceed to the Assembly Area located in the parking lot bordered by Clay 8th and 9th Streets. Citizens and employees should assist visually and hearing impaired visitors with exiting the building. Citizens wishing to speak during public hearings and/or the citizen comment period have generally
Vice President Hilkert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
three minutes to speak.
Aye.
Those recommendations have all been adopted.
Persons appearing before council are not allowed to.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If we could move on to the awards and presentations for the evening.
Campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use language of a personal
Okay.
nature which insults or demeans any person, including comments directed at public officials or staff members that are not related to their official duties or address or question
The first recognition being presented by Council President and 9th District Council Representative,
staff members directly.
Michelle Mosby, recognizes Minister Hassan Khalim Zarif for his dedication and community
All questions are to be directed to the President of Council. Failure to adhere to the guidelines may result in speakers forfeiting any remaining time
service.
and further disciplinary action as necessary, which could include barring from attendance
A dedicated community servant, Minister Hassan Khalim Zarif has devoted decades of service
at future meetings of the City Council for a period of six months.
to the greater Richmond area in helping criminal offenders and ex-offenders transition back Madam President, for the record, all members of Council are in attendance this evening. into the community by assisting with some of the most critical, important reentry needs,
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move on to appointments and reappointments.
Yes, council members, each of you have been provided a listing of appointments and such as housing, employment, and treatment programs. reappointment recommendations from your standing committees. Beginning work for Goodwill Industries Incorporated in 2001 as a program manager for the Medical Is there a motion to accept the recommendations as presented?
To move.
Adaptive Equipment Program, in 2007, Minister Zarif was appointed to serve as its reentry
Seconded.
Thank you. Council is voting on the motion, which has been properly seconded, to accept the appointments coordinator, a position that he currently holds. and reappointments as recommended. As a sterling testament to his tremendous service to the community, Minister Zarif Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels? has been presented the Virginia State Conference NAACP State Convention Leadership Award and
Aye.
Mr. Agostino?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell? Goodwill Industries of Central Virginia Spirit of the Mission Award. Richmond City Council hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate Minister Hassan Khalim Zarif for his ongoing dedication to our community and brings this to the attention of all Richmond residents.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Zarif, I met Mr. Zarif before I became a council representative. This is one of my passions. This is, this is that thing that I do. And so I, they were inviting me to meet some important people, and he was one of them. And he gave me a perspective because he was someone that had been through the trenches. He was someone that had dealt with being angry because he had been through the trenches, and then deciding that that's not quite going to get me where I'm trying to go. And so what I've watched in Mr. Zarif at the Goodwill and outside of Goodwill is that he's just an awesome, awesome man. He's one of those people that if you're going to do this type of work, you want him on your team. Because he is an example to what can happen to your life if you decide that you want different. And so I'd like to thank, King Salim, I thank you because it was something that you brought to my attention, and I said, sure, because I think you're an absolutely fabulous person. And, and, and I'm hoping that we can do much more work together to make sure that the returning citizens get the second chance, the third chance, and the fourth chance that they need because in this life, we all know, we get more than second chances. People that don't have these boundaries get more than a second chance. And so we've got to provide opportunities for those that have had issues and are coming back into this, this way of life. And so I am so thankful for all that you do, who you are, and I appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
To the Mayor and to Council President Mosby, I would like, and to council members, I would like to say this is an extreme honor. My spiritual father, Elder James Clemens Jr., thirty-some years ago, told me that this day would happen one day, and I thank God for him. I thank God for my supporters who've come tonight. My aunt and uncle, who for many years came to the state penitentiary and ministered unto me. But this is a testament tonight to individuals who are trying to get back into society and do that which is right, to know that if they come back into their community and rebuild, that the community will give them an opportunity. They will also employ them. I want to thank Commonwealth Consultation, King Salim Kafani, for all that he's done to, to make this day possible. And with that, I just want to say I am indeed thankful, and I want to thank Goodwill, I want to thank Chaplain Services, and all the other entities. And if I have not called your name, you are included. Thank you so very much. God bless you. (applause)
The next recognition being presented by 5th District Council Representative Parker Agostino and 8th District Council Representative Riva Trammell and Chris Beshler, CAO Office of the Mayor, recognizes George With High School for the Arts Boys Varsity Basketball Team for their successful 2015-16 season. And present to receive this award are Ms. Riva Green, school principal; Shervey Barnes, athletic director; Willard Cokes, head coach; Reginald Goodwin, assistant coach, and also additional assistant coaches are Kareem Horton, Brian Underwood, Malik White, student player. Other student players are Maurice Coleman, Eric Cruz, Brandon Holly, Kareem Morton Jr., Jamal Anderson, Traquan Bell, Stiles Salam, Salmon, Malik Nelson, Richard Sanders, Jeremiah Huff, DeAndre Maddox, Mark Spears, David Ford, Jashawn Jones, Katira Pretlow, Tamara Robinson, Angela Jordan, scorekeeper; Omar Kizzi, clockkeeper; Deidra Starks, ticket seller, and CJ Richardson, announcer. Ladies and gentlemen...
I've got to read the award.
Thank you.
Sorry. The Honorable Mayor Dwight C. Jones and the Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the Richmond Public Schools George With High School for the Arts Boys Varsity Basketball Team for their successful 2014-2015 boys' basketball season. As a testament to outstanding dedication, the Richmond Public Schools George With High School for the Arts Boys Varsity Basketball Team won first place in the 2015 Virginia High School League Group AAA Boys Basketball Tournamentship, Championship. The success of the team goes to the outstanding principal, administrators, teachers, coaches, managers, players, staff, parents, families, supporters, friends, and the community for their collective roles in helping to make this achievement possible. Mayor Jones and Richmond City Council thanks everyone for their dedication and for their collective roles in helping to make this outstanding achievement possible.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the state championship George With High School Bulldogs.
(applause)
How you getting emotional, man? (applause) I don't even have to tell you.
These, these young men made it to the championship game last year, and they lost to another Richmond City High School, John Marshall. They made it back this year, and they dominated not only the game but the entire tournament. They came back with perseverance and dedication and really closed the deal in 2015. I think it is with great respect that all members of City Council are up here to honor your team and to recognize your accomplishments that you have done this year. There's a lot that we can be thankful for in this city, but to see a team come together and to make school history is remarkable. For those of you that are here that do not know the history, George With High School is 55 years old, and not one athletic team has ever won a state championship until this year with the team standing before you. (applause) That takes dedication, that takes determination, that takes dignity to be able to stand here and to recognize the awards that we're bestowing on you. What I challenge each of you all is what you do in the future is to reflect on this moment and to always challenge yourself to exceed this moment. Do better than what you have done now, and what you have done now is awesome. I want to thank while they're here, Principal Riva Green for her leadership at George With High School.[862.43][862.43](applause) Coach, Coach Coker for really bringing the team together and being there with them.[872.75][872.75](applause) And before I hand the mic over, I know that we're going to have some remarks from the students, but one thing that I want to say, and this is me personally speaking, we talk so much about sports, and we're in the NCAA tournament right now, but sometimes we forget which word should precede the other word. So often, what we talk about is the student athlete. I want us to think about the athletic student. Who's the noun and who's the adjective? Which describes whom? Be the student first, the athlete second. And I know that's something that the principal and the coaches always reinforce, and I think that's one of the reasons that we see George With being accredited this year, is to always put your academics first. So with that, I'm going to let Ms. Trammell say some words, and then we'll hear from our council president.
First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you, and I can't say more than what Parker has said because I know that everybody said, well, this isn't the 5th district, doesn't matter. The children from my district also go to George With, and I just want to say that I'm just so proud of all of you and remember everything that he said because he spoke from the heart. Okay? So congratulations to all of you. Congratulations.
And I'll be, I'll be brief as well because I know some of you are from the 9th district as well.[962.32][962.32](laughing) And the 6th. But, and I'm not going to give you a long speech, but I do want you to, to, to remember that he said you lost last year, but the fact that you kept your head, you didn't say, you know what, we lost, oh, well, you came back and you said, we're going to do our best again this year, and you did it as a team. And when you can work with people, you can overcome anything. As long as you don't live a life thinking that you're isolated in a box, you can move forward. As long as you know you need him, and you need him, and he needs you, all of you know that you need each other, you can get somewhere in this life. So just keep that in mind, also being the, keep your academics first, but keep in mind that it takes teamwork a lot of times to make the dream work. Make sure you know that you need your teammates. We're looking at each other and we're saying, we're going to go together. Because no one wants to get to the mountaintop, and ain't nobody there that they don't know. Take your friends. When you get an opportunity, leave the door open so opportunity can follow the others, okay? All right? (applause)
Good evening. On behalf of Mayor Dwight Jones, I just want to say one thing, you guys are awesome. And there's not a lot that I really can add, except I just want to leave you with this one thought. Please, please, don't underestimate your role as role models, not only for your peers, for the youth, but also for us as adults. We look up to you, we look at the hard work and dedication and the results that that gets, and you truly are excellent role models, and I commend you for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause)
No, I, I, I want to echo everything that's been said, and you guys are great. And I'm so happy that this year was a winning year for you, not only for this year but for the history of the school. So we love you, and we want you just to continue to push forward as you're doing and continue to work together. But I also just wanted to ask if there were any parents or any family members that were here, if you all would stand, because it is always the backing of the family who stand up and support our young people that make a difference. We want to thank you. Thank you very much.
The team and I would like to say thank you for recognizing us, and we really appreciate it. That's it. (applause)
I would like to say thank you to President Michelle Mosby and the City Council members. Also would like to say that, of course, we're extremely proud of these young men, not only for being student athletics, as student athletes, but this is the first group to truly excel academically since we put the GPA in place for Richmond Public Schools. So they did it in both academics and athletics.[1167.11][1167.11](applause) And thank you so much for publicly announcing the importance of our community and our parents because without them this year, we wouldn't struggle. We, when I said wouldn't struggle, they were there every step of the way. They provided meals, they traveled everywhere we went. So again, thank you and continue to support us even when they go and move forward away from us.[1193.01][1193.01](applause) The young man that just spoke was Mr. Maurice Coleman. He's shy right now, but he's actually in the top 10 of his class. So he's on his way to school as well.[1205.42][1205.42](applause) And I'm not sure, I thought I saw Dr. Bedden, but I just want to say, Dr. Bedden, thank you so much for supporting us. He was there when we was in the championship game as well as the semifinals. It meant a lot to see you there, and we continue and want your support as you've been doing so far. Thank you so much.[1225.49][1225.49](applause)
You can give that to everybody, but what we'll, what we'll ask is for the team to
and 8th District Council Representative Riva Trammell recognizes the Richmond Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Blackwell Bulldogs Basketball Team for a great season.
turn around. We've got a photographer here, and we'll have all of City Council with you.
The Honorable Members of Richmond City Council hereby recognize, honor, and celebrate the
(inaudible) Thank you again, George With Bulldogs.
Richmond Department of Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Blackwell Bulldogs
Thank you.
Basketball Team for a great season. The success of the team goes to the outstanding coaches, players, parents, families, supporters, friends, and Richmond community for their collective roles in helping to make this great season possible. Richmond City Council is a strong supporter, champion, and advocate of the continued progress, advancement, and success of the Richmond community, and is proud to promote and encourage extracurricular activities that provide safe and structured learning environments to help our children and youth build good mental and physical health in preparing them for lifelong learning and success. Richmond City Council thanks everyone for their collective role in helping to make this great season possible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want, we have a little commotion in here. If everyone would just allow the speakers to speak and have these young people honored, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
The names of the individuals who are present to receive the award is team coach Deron Patron, Rodkiss Bowling Team Player. Other team players are Romell Bradley, Aiden Crutchfield, Elijah Freeman, Christopher Hutchinson, Tre'Shawn Jeffries, Alom Jones, Khalil Jones, Dominique Salz, Teyon Thomas, Cody Thompson, Monterey Thompson, Dante Washington, Camden Wasaki, Aiden Bratton. Those are the individuals present.[1358.01][1358.01](applause)
You all are my heroes too. Okay?[1372.01][1372.01](laughing) You might be tiny and all of that, but you know what? You're, you're the best. You're the best of the best, okay?[1379.11][1379.11](laughing) And we can't wait for, what, a couple more years? You all going to be standing up here just like they were. Isn't that right? Look, they all looking at you. Because you know what? Our children are our future. Yes, all of you. I tell you.[1393.11][1393.11](laughing) Did you want to say something?[1397.01][1397.01](laughing) I just want to say that I'm so proud of you all and that, you know, you've got parents that love you, you've got teachers that love you, you've got people that stand behind you, and you've got this council. These City Council members stand with you all too, at George With and everywhere else, all the schools in the city. Because you all are doing a great job, and there are just so many times you all don't get recognized, and you don't even get the thank you that you all deserve. So I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, keep up the good work.[1425.42][1425.42](applause)
I would like to thank City Council for recognizing us. Also, I would like to congratulate George With for winning that state title.[1443.61][1443.61](applause) I would like to thank Coach Coker for extending his hand and making this picture happen.[1451.76][1451.76](applause) Also, this is where some of these guys started. They started in the rec, and now I look at them, and I'm proud of them. Most of them, some of them are my guys, some of them come to the rec center. And Coach Coker, you made these guys' day by inviting us out to the game and to take the picture. So, you know, a lot, a lot of them, after they went home, they said they can't wait to go to George With High School and play basketball.[1482.61][1482.61](applause) Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. That's good.
Turn around, A.
Madam President, that concludes our list of awards and presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will move on to our citizen comment period. Okay, the first speaker is Willie Earl Bradley.
My name's Earl Bradley. I'm calling again to talk about my favorite subject, economic development. I'm coming on the edge of the latest news clippings and roughens to the authority that City Council has, and I'm coming to encourage you to use that authority, to move from this point forward in what President Mosby was speaking of, and roughly takes a team. That team is inclusive of everybody, and when you bring everybody to the table, then we can move forward. And what we've had so far...
Oh my goodness, you all are my heroes too. You might be tiny and all of that, but you know what? You're the best. You're the best of the best, okay? And we can't wait for, what, a couple more years? You all gonna be standing up here just like they were. Isn't that right? Look, they all looking at you. Because you know what? Our children are our future. Yes, all of you. I tell you. Did you want to say something? I just want to say that I'm so proud of you all and that, you know, you got parents that love you, you got teachers that love you, you got people that stand behind you, and you got this council. These city council members stand with you all too. At George with and everywhere else, all the schools in the city. Because you all are doing a great job, and there are just so many times you all don't get recognized, and you don't even get the thank you that you all deserve. So I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, keep up the good work.
I would like to thank City Council for recognizing us. Also, I would like to congratulate George with for winning that state title. I would like to thank Coach Coker for extending his hand and making this picture happen. Also, this is where some of these guys started. They started in the rec. And now I look at them, and I'm proud of them. Most of them, some of them are my guys. Some of them come to the rec center. And Coach Coker, you made these guys' day by inviting us out to the game and to take the picture. So, you know, a lot of them, after they went home, they said they can't wait to go to George with High School and play basketball. Thank you.
Turn around.
Madam President, that concludes our list of awards and presentations for this evening. Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we will move on to our citizen comment period. Okay, the first speaker is Willie Earl Bradley.
Good afternoon. My name's Earl Bradley. I'm calling again to talk about my favorite subject, economic development. I'm coming on the edge of the latest news clippings and roughness to the authority that City Council has. And I'm coming to encourage you to use that authority to move from this point forward in what President Mosby was speaking of in reference to takes a team. That team is inclusive of everybody. And when you bring everybody to the table, then we can move forward. And what we've had so far is there's certain people at the table. And those that's at the table is not coming up with the right concepts and ideas. So we encourage you that now that the Richmond Time Dispatch has confirmed that City Council has the authority over the EDA, over RRHA, over DECD, all you have to do is establish the ordinances that you want to amend, to limit, and set violations for what the community has been engaged in you about in reference to the opportunities that's not there, to whether to disbar this study for the state stated is 98% European receiving awards and 2% minorities. You have that authority, and I encourage you to use that authority, that newfound authority that some was hesitant in whether or not you had it or not. You do have it. And we need you to use that in reference to procurement reform to bring things back in line for the local residents. That's the history of what Virginia Public Procurement Act is about. It's about providing the opportunities for the inhabitants of the city that that jurisdiction is in. It's the local governing body responsibility to make sure that that is dispersed, oversight, and utilized. So again, I encourage you to use the oversight authority that you have, establish citizenry to be on these public bodies. Because as you have seen, they are not really bringing back the full information to you to where that you can make the decision that you may need to have. So I encourage you to use the authority that you have, use the ordinance power and authority to demand that they bring it to you on a timely manner. Set the violations if they don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. The next speaker is Darrell Badley.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of City Council of the great city of Richmond, Virginia. Good afternoon and good evening to my friends and those that have the best interest in heart when it comes to our fair city. I come to you today concerning one of the most hated and most untalked about subjects in our schools and our community, domestic violence. But I don't come to you talking about all the things that it does bad. I'm coming to you today to inform you that in two weeks, April 4th, 150 to 200 Richmond Public School kids from every single school district, all nine of them, all high schools and middle schools, will be taking part, along with community members, in a mass choir that will be coming together to advocate against and talk against domestic violence. I want to inform you that these, that Dr. Bedden has endorsed this effort, as well as the school board has endorsed this effort, because he and they feel that our children need a voice. Our children need an opportunity to express themselves. Most importantly, our children, when granted the opportunity to be able to sing onstage with Grammy and Stella Award nominated and award-winning artists, for the sake of domestic violence, for the sake of our kids, wanting to have some opportunity to be able to actually say, "I was there." Center stage on Saturday with Ty Tribett, with Ann Nesby, with Tony Grant, with local artist James Johnson, local artists and local celebrities, Lisa Nguyen, all in the name of domestic violence awareness. So I ask you, I plead with you, support our children, support our communities, support and bust wide open this murderer of our schools, this raper of our children, this pillager of our communities, that is domestic violence, by showing your support to your constituents and your children on April 4th. Center stage, right here in Richmond, where this national campaign of 15 cities will start and launch. Richmond has an opportunity to say, "We will stand up. We will be heard." One voice, your voice, my voice, our voices together. We can make a difference. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marty Jewell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Madam President, boy, that's got a ring to it. No offense to you, Mr. Samuel. That's really got a ring. Good evening to you. I, so many times folks come down here to fuss at you. I've been in that number, but I'm here tonight to praise you again. You relieved a lot of anxiety for not only me, but citizens across this city when you passed unanimously the resolution calling on the mayor to look elsewhere, to partner up with county neighbors and look elsewhere for a ballpark instead of in Chaco Bottom. Overwhelming majority opposed that. You stood up against a lot of fierce lobbying, and you beat that effort back. I don't know that it's dead, because I'm hearing that the corporate crew is still anxious to have a ballpark in the bottom. And I expect them to come back. But we'll be there to fight them again. It's insane that we would spend $80 million in that bottom when our schools, for these very children who are here tonight, their schools are falling down all around them. It is insane that we should suggest that somehow we don't have enough money when we would put $80 million in a ballpark in the bottom. I'm sorry, Ms. Robertson, but $21 million for a school that's not needed in Highland Park. One of the newer schools, if you take away the four new schools that we've got. School Board, in their wisdom, has said, "We don't want it. We love to have the money." Two years ago, a report came out from schools that we've got from 500 to 900 million dollars, almost a billion dollars worth of school construction and repair needs. How can that same corporate neighbors, who not long ago told us that excellent education is the one thing that we all need to rally around, and then lead this government down the path of this anxiety-driven idea of putting a ballpark in the bottom? And so we urge you to forget it. Put that money in full funding our schools. Richmond City Schools receives 17% of our general fund budget when Henry Michael Chesterfield and Hanover, all three average 37% more than we're giving, over 100%. And at some point, you will bring sense to us, again, I hope, and full fund this school board. Thanks.
Madam President, that concludes our list of speakers for this evening.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I did not bring this up. I should have done it prior to citizen comment period. But Dick Harmon, our official announcer, he has, tonight represents his 27th year anniversary. And that means he has seen about an estimate of 52 council members. And so I just think it's that time that we need to give you a woo-hoo. You're very welcome. We appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, at this time, we will review the amendments to tonight's agenda.
Amendments to tonight's agenda are as follows. Item 1, ordinance number 2014-208, will be continued to the Monday, April 27th council meeting. Item 2, ordinance number 2014-217, will be continued to the Monday, April 27th council meeting. Item 4, ordinance number 2015-41, will be continued to the Monday, April 13th council meeting. Item 8, ordinance number 2015-45, will also be continued to the Monday, April 27th council meeting. Item 11, resolution number 2013-R254, will be continued to the Monday, April 13th council meeting. Item 12, resolution number 2014-R149, and item 13, resolution number 2014-R150, will be continued to the Monday, April 13th council meeting. Item 14, resolution number 2014-R158, will be continued to the Monday, April 27th council meeting. Item 20, resolution number 2015-R20, will also be continued to the Monday, April 13th, 2015 council meeting. Item 21, ordinance number 2014-199, will be amended and continued to the Monday, April 27th council meeting later this evening. Item 23, ordinance number 2014-33, will be continued to the Monday, April 27th council meeting. Item 24, ordinance number 2015-35, has been moved to the regular agenda and will be continued to the Monday, April 13th council meeting. Item 25, ordinance number 2015-40, will be continued to the Monday, April 13th council meeting and referred for consideration with the fiscal year 16 and 17 budget papers. Item 26, resolution number 2014-R184, will be amended and continued to the Monday, April 13th council meeting later this evening. Item 27, resolution number 2014-R258, will be continued to the Tuesday, May 26th council meeting. Item 28, resolution number 2015-R9, will be amended and voted on later this evening. Madam President, those are all of tonight's agenda amendments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Does any other, any council member have any additional amendments? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the question.
I will need a motion to accept the amended agenda as presented. Councilwoman Trammell, will you make that motion?
So move, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bilalz, will you second that motion? The council is voting on this evening's agenda amendments as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agilasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
The amended agenda is before you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please provide a review of tonight's items on the consent agenda?
The consent agenda items for tonight are as follows. Item 3, ordinance number 2015-39, to accept $5,000 from the Virginia Commission for the Arts for the purpose of providing a grant to the Cadence Theater Company. Item 5, ordinance number 2015-42, to amend ordinance number 2014-62-99 to transfer $200,000 from the Department of Economic and Community Development Agency to a new line item for the purpose of providing a grant to Southside Community Development and Housing Corporation to complete the construction of six houses under the Neighborhood Stabilization Program 1. Item 6, ordinance number 2015-43, to amend ordinance number 2014-62-99 to transfer $25,000 from the Non-Departmental Agency Partnership for Smarter Growth Matchline item to Groundwork RVA, Inc., for the purpose of making a grant pursuant to Virginia Code to an organization furnishing services to beautify and maintain communities or to prevent neighborhood deterioration. Item 7, ordinance number 2015-44, to accept $197,658 from the Office of the Attorney General of Virginia for the purpose of using asset forfeiture funds to provide tactical safety and protective equipment for sworn sheriff's office personnel. Item 9, ordinance number 2015-48, to declare that a public necessity exists and to acquire at a tax delinquent judicial sale, 1800 Crowe Street, and to accept title to such property for the purpose of maintaining as public green space and for recreational uses. Item 10, ordinance number 2015-49, to amend city code concerning the city's stormwater management program and adding therein new fees for the city code section 50-415A, both for the purpose of ensuring compliance with state law. Item 15, resolution number 2015-R11, to request the CEO to negotiate an agreement with GRTC to lease the property formerly known as the Bus Barn at the intersection of Robinson and West Carey Streets for public parking and community event purposes. Item 16, resolution number 2015-R16, to approve $500 from the council district funds for the 4th district to make a donation to Girls for a Change for its 2015 Date with Dad event. Item 17, resolution number 2015-R17, to approve $1,780 from the council district funds for the 2nd district to pay the Department of Information Technology for the printing and mailing of the 2nd District Winter and Spring 2015 newsletter to 2nd District residents. Item 18, resolution number 2015-R18, to amend the resolution which adopted city council expenditure reimbursement guidelines governing the use of council district funds and council operations funds for the purpose of making revisions to the guidelines. Item 19, resolution number 2015-R19, to amend the rules of procedure adopted by resolution number 2014-R253-240 for the purpose of modifying the time at which the informal meetings begin. Those are all of the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. We will now have public comment on the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of one of the papers? Anyone would like to speak for papers? One of the papers? Bring it back to council for discussion. Madam Clerk, could call the question, please?
Council is voting on tonight's consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agilasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Dubill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby? Those papers have been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the regular agenda.
We have one item for consideration on the regular agenda, and that is item number 22, ordinance number 2015-32, to authorize the CAO to execute an agreement between the city and the USP Echo Harbor LLC for facilitating the relocation of existing city wastewater utility facilities and providing for a public right-of-way easement to be used as a segment of the Virginia Capitol Trail. That paper is before you for consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone from? Mr. Stidl, I'll thank you some.
Madam President, Bob Stidl, Director of Utilities. Just as introduction to this paper, the purpose of this paper is to relocate a large portion of our infrastructure. There's a six-foot diameter combined sewer pipe that runs through the middle of two parcels, making those parcels basically undevelopable. And the pipeline is not depreciated. We would be using this pipeline for many years to come. So the developer has asked permission to be able to relocate that pipeline themselves at their cost. We have discussed that with them and found a way that we can do a relocation agreement. We can move that pipe. They will do it in accordance with our standards. We will inspect the job. We will make sure it's done correctly. The relocation was taken to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission agreed to the new location. So we're asking you for three things. The first thing is to allow the CAO to enter into the relocation agreement to start with so that the developer can do the work. The second thing would be so that when the pipe is relocated, we can enter into an easement for the new location of the new pipe. And then the third thing would be the CAO would be allowed to then vacate the last easement, which is the easement that runs through the property, so that the property would then have more space to be able to be built upon. It's a very simple process. It's done all over the United States, and it's done all over the city of Richmond for projects. And again, this is something the developer has brought forward to us. We've worked very hard with them to make sure that the agreement is correct, and we believe we have one to play before you.
Thank you, Mr. Stidl. All right. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on the paper. Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition of the paper?
President Mosby, Vice President Hilbert, and members of council. I'm representing a wide group of bodies who are based in Richmond, and a number of them are behind me, and they'll continue after I briefly introduced the topic to you. A letter was emailed to all of you this afternoon at 2:45, and I apologize.
Sir, do you mind stating your name for the record?
I apologize. I'm John. I'm John Whitworth, and I'm a resident of Richmond. A letter was emailed to you all at 2:45 this afternoon, and I apologize for the lateness of the receipt of this formal letter. The letter was written by Scenic Virginia, Preservation Virginia, and the Riverview Advocates, and I'm here on behalf of the Riverview Advocates. There are only a few of us, of our supporters here tonight, as we were led to believe that the matter before you was going to be continued, and we, in fact, we only learned today that this was not the case. What we are doing is we are requesting your support for continuance of this ordinance, 2015-32, which seeks your approval for relocating a key piece of city infrastructure and the associated public easements, i.e. the combined sewer overflow pipe that runs below USP and Echo Harbor. It's likely that the developer and the city staff will present this as a simple utility matter. It is anything but simple, though, and continuing this paper will provide you the additional time to understand the full implications of the proposal and the risks to the city. It is not possible to build on top of these pipes, and accordingly, the developer wants, as you've just heard, to move them from the center of the parcel with the city's easement vacated and reestablished along the shoreline. The city, though, is under no obligation to move its pipe and easement, and the proposal entails risks to the city. The developer brought the parcel with full knowledge of the city's CSO and the associated easements running the length of the property. There are some colleagues behind me now, which will go into further details of the matters that we would like to bring to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitworth. Everyone that plans to speak in opposition, if you could line up so that we can have an idea of the number. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Bill Dinkin. I'm a resident of the 7th District, and I'm also a member of the RVA 180, the folks who submitted the letter to you. The first point I'd like to make, in paragraph 2 of the ordinance, it indicates that the acquisition of the interest in real estate identified in attachment B1, and I'll skip to the end, quote, "is needed for the public purpose of providing sewer and water facilities." In fact, this paper is not needed in order to provide the city with needed sewer and water facilities because this pipe, this CSO that runs and bisects this property, adequately provides exactly what this paper says the city needs. The Department of Public Utilities indicates that its available life is to 2050, which means there is absolutely no legal reason that you need to move this, or technical reason, to move this pipeline. There are some very good legal reasons to leave it where it is. First, the city's under a -- or has a VPDES permit, which is with the State Water Control Board, and that addresses the combined sewage overflow that the city has actually been struggling with for many years as far as keeping it under control. The city, because of the old infrastructure, has historically had difficulties in complying with the permit, and therefore, they're under a consent order with the State Water Control Board. And that consent order sets forth performance requirements and anticipated goals that the city is supposed to meet. There really has not -- that we have heard been an adequate discussion of the potential impact of moving this pipeline on the VPDES permit or on the structure set forth in that consent order. The agreement seems to indicate that the new pipeline, should it be built, would comply with the permit and the consent order, but it really leaves the city vulnerable to whatever consequences might happen should this movement take place, and it does comply, and then leaving you in violation with a consent order and with your actual permit. It simply requires the developer to comply with that. There's another good legal reason to leave it where it is, and there's not been an adequate discussion of this in any of the reports, and that is that there is a separate shoreline easement that runs along at least a portion of the shore.
Sir.
Okay.
Sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. You can summarize, sir.
I can summarize. Oh, I appreciate that. We are asking for continuance. We're asking for continuance for technical reasons. We're asking for continuance for legal reasons. This hasn't been adequately explored. This is being done at the behest or the request of a developer who purchased the site, knowing the limitations, that they couldn't develop the site without this being moved. The proposed development is certainly significantly in excess of the surrounding environment. This is a parcel that has been left with an M1 or M2 designation, and it is very much at odds with the riverfront plan, and I think that my fellow folks with this group will discuss that. And so we're urging a continuance to further explore and discuss the problems that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eugenia Anderson Ellis, and I've been here before. And in fact, some of the things I'm going to say, I've said before because I'm very much in favor of economic development. I think that to turn this property over, to lean over backwards as the city, to allow them to move these pipes, ignoring the tremendous economic benefit to other development, on that particularly development that the citizens have said with great turnout and numbers that that's what they want. The plan says, the city ordinance for this says, hopefully, that it would raise the value of the property and it would raise taxes. But what it doesn't go into detail, and this is another reason we're wanting a continuance, it doesn't go into detail about lowering taxes, when the historic view is taken away, and all the things that are seen from the neighborhood, and lowering the value. And it doesn't talk about if, in fact, we did have the beautiful park that we envisioned for that area, the continuity, then the rise in value of adjoining properties. And it doesn't talk also about, you now have the Stone Brewery coming up, and you have the International Terminal there, where if these three high-rise go up, this will block their air and space and view of the downtown. There's just lots of tremendous possibility for economic development in the surrounding area. The city owns a lot of property in that area, and it just makes no sense to turn over this one strip on the riverfront, which, in order to build on, they have to move the sewer pipes because it's narrow enough as it is. It makes no sense. Why would we lean over backwards to do that for one developer when there's so much greater possibility of economic development around it and not decrease value for what's already there and lots of tax revenue for the city? So I really urge you for a continuance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Vice President, and esteemed council members. My name is Leighton Powell, and I served as Executive Director of Scenic Virginia, which is a statewide conservation organization dedicated to preservation of scenic lands and significant vistas. I was one of the authors of the letter that we sent out earlier today, along with Elizabeth Costelny of Preservation Virginia, which is the statewide nonprofit dedicated to historic preservation. The View that named Richmond was one of their 2012 endangered historic sites. I was struck earlier tonight by the gentleman who gave the invocation, who referenced being stewards of our city. That's what this group is trying to do. We are some of the hundreds who turned out, starting in 2007, 2008, to work on the downtown master plan. It had probably one of the greatest turnouts of citizen input in the history of the city. Over and over and over again, people mentioned what they want. They said, "This is how we want our city to look. We want a downtown and a riverfront that are vibrant and vital and multidestinational and that can really bring about change in this part of the city." This particular parcel held up the passage of the downtown plan for a year. The citizens wanted one thing. They wanted a park that preserved the view. The developer asked for development. We had meeting after meeting after meeting. People continued to turn out, and again, and again, and again showed up, and finally, a development option alternate, which was thought to be a Plan B in the event that the city couldn't acquire the parcel, was passed. But the overwhelming majority of people want a park there, and that is what, if you read the master plan, the downtown plan, it -- there are numerous mentions to how to do this and what should be done and what might come of that. And in particular, there's one section that says, and I pulled together, I have a copy of the letter in case you didn't get yours earlier. I also have a copy of something that I call "Making the Case for Acquisition of the Tarmac USP Parcel," which pulled out the sections from the downtown plan that specifically referenced this. And one of them said, "Properties to acquire include those with historic, scenic, wildlife, or recreational values, among others. In particular, the former tarmac property parcel, which is Echo Harbor USP, those are the other names, and the Lehigh Cement Factory on the north side of the river and Mayo Island in the center of the river should be purchased. The city should purchase the properties at fair market value, and negotiations with these various property owners should begin as soon as possible." It's -- the plan finally passed in 2009. We have been patient, trying to figure out how to move forward. We know that the city has financial difficulties, and that the acquisition of parkland might not be at the top of the list, but what we have said is that we are going to find the private funding. We're not asking the city to come up with this money on its own, and that offer remains out there. And all we're asking for is a little more time for you to consider the questions that are asked in this letter that we sent earlier today and to give us time to talk to the developer and to figure out how this might work. We're in conversations with the Trust for Public Land, which has the funds to acquire this parcel and is very interested in doing so, and that's all we're asking. Please just give us a little more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Cabal West, and I live in the city of Richmond, and I am a member of Scenic Virginia. I've had the privilege to go as a delegate for Scenic Virginia to see Richmond upon Thames, and I don't know whether many of you have had that opportunity, but if you have, you had that aha moment that I had when I saw that view, and I knew, when I saw it, I said, "No wonder William Byrd named this Richmond because it's the same view." So why do we want to mar this view? Why do we want to put this tourist attraction at risk? Why do we not want to follow the downtown plan that so many people, including you all, put your heart and soul into? By approving this ordinance, you're making development possible on this tract of land that could just mar the view. Development needs to go hand in hand with preservation. I urge you to continue this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Stuart Schwartz. I'm a resident of Churchill and been a resident of the city for almost 10 years now. My wife and I bought here, and I love this city. We participated in the downtown master planning process, which was a true revelation. It was one of the best public processes we'd ever seen, and in the years since, through the Riverfront Plan and the other plans, we have seen strong support for protection of this view shed and for the park option that is listed in the downtown plan. As John mentioned in the very beginning, we had been hoping for a continuance. We've been told it was likely. We've been trying to work through the process, and therefore, you don't have all the people before you, but there were 2,400 petition signatures collected over the last couple of years as various debates over the view have come forward. Bill outlined some of the technical issues that we think are relevant for you to ask about and which merit continuance. One he didn't mention, which was of concern to us, is that the agreement calls for the engineer, for the landowner, for the developer to also be -- provide the inspections and the inspection data to the city. We think a truly independent engineer should be involved in reviewing this. But again, he also notes that we do not have to move a pipe that is -- has a life through 2050, and that we'd like to see that this is indeed going to -- would enhance our environmental conditions. The bottom line, though, is it does make it more likely that the parcel could be developed, and the problem with development here is, as proposed, it is not the three to five stories in the plan, but it's ultimately eight and nine stories on top of a two-story podium. The problem with this is you have a floodplain, then the developer needs the height to cover these costs, and the height then puts you into the view shed. Since the downtown plan really showed a preference for preservation as a park, it's been our hope that the city would make that a priority, yet it has been spending significant staff time making it more feasible to develop instead of having a more open process to discuss what the future of this parcel should be. You know, back then, when the Planning Commission voted, it was a small item. I don't think there was any notification to the Churchill Association, or people would have known that the sewer movement was related to a development. The bottom line is it's not a simple issue before you as it might be presented, but it is tied up with a lot of issues about the future of our city. Eugenia noted economic development benefits of view sheds and tourism and park preservation. I think there's also a benefit to Stone of preserving their view of Tobacco Row and the city rather than obscuring it as this would do. I think it would be just fair to the community to dig into this a little bit more, to continue it, to allow both for questions to be answered and the risks to the city to be assessed, but also to allow time for the community, Scenic Virginia Trust for Public Land, to talk to the landowners, to reach what we think would be a win-win. Honestly, given the cost of development of the parcel, the big expensive 900-foot-long parking podium, moving the CSO, the lack of office market, the lower-risk approach for the developer, we would hope, would be preservation as a park, and that would end up being the win-win for the community as a whole. So we're asking simply for, I think, what is a fair outcome today, which would be a continuance to allow this discussion to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor of this paper?
Madam President, members of council, my name is Andy Comlin. Again, thank you for giving us time to speak. Contrary to what a number of people have said, this ordinance before you is actually pretty simple, and what Mr. Stidell had said is actually very commonplace, not only within the city of Richmond, but throughout the United States. This is not an SUP. It's not a request for approval of uses that are otherwise not allowed. This is just for relocation of utility on a private property. It meets all the standards of Department of Public Utilities. It is typical and happens throughout the city. It extends the life of the pipe. I've not heard the term 2050 before. Quite frankly, this pipe was built in 1965. It already is -- is already meeting its design life capacity. All costs of relocation are paid for by the owner, the private property owner, at no cost to the city to bring private development on private property. The city Planning Commission approved this consistent with the master plan. They specifically have to look at the master plan, as does consideration for a plan of development for this specific property. As a matter of fact, today, we can develop the property. We can develop the property today at a greater height and with a greater mass blocking more views. We took into consideration, we tried to come up with a win-win, to take into consideration through the public process, through the Planning Commission. And as has been said, it has been in the downtown plan since 2009. To ask for continuance now is only delaying and causing cost to us. In order to ask for a continuance, even if this paper is approved tonight, they can still come to us. They can still talk to us. We still have another year of permitting and design and construction to go ahead, up to two years to go ahead for the construction. They still have that opportunity. Nothing prevents that. We're simply asking to move a utility pipe on private property, and that's what this is at the end of the day, something that happens regularly, and the city can still condemn the property if they want to hold it for public property. Other property owners can still ask for and still give an offer. All it is is the pipe in the ground being moved from one location to the other to be able to reduce the height and provide for better development by private property owners using private funds. That, to me, is good development. It's not blocking anyone's views at this point. Be happy to answer any questions if you have. Thank you.
Bring it back to council for discussion. Mr. Agulasto?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question. With the -- with the where the location of the CSO is now, is the parcel developable? Is the current existing CSO preventing development on the site, hence the need to relocate? Is the current existing CSO preventing development on the site, hence the need to relocate?
In talking with our engineers, Timmons, an architect, Commonwealth architect, the property is developable. It's been used in the past for industrial purposes and, do you want to say something? It has been used for industrial purposes with, that's why the CSO is located where it is. The master plan specifically calls for moving it closer to the city or closer to the river and having buildings along Dock Street. The way that the M2 works with the height, it's a greater incline plane. The farther you are away from the public streets, the higher you can go. So moving the development closer to the river, we can go higher as development has in the past and it creates a greater mass because it's a more narrow area. But according to our engineers, we can develop. I don't know, Bob, if you want to mention, I talked about it as well.
Good evening. My name is Robert Mills. I'm an architect of this project. And I was also the chairman of the planning commission at the time that the downtown master plan was written. And so I was intimately involved in the development of the alternative idea of bringing a development option to this piece of property. What we have done in the design of this property, in this project, through our plan of development, is actually shift the building back so that we could create a linear park along the edge of the waterfront, which was one of the, the elements that we had put into the downtown master plan, the continuation of a linear park on the waterfront. The property is developable as it stands right now, but the better solution for the benefit of the city and to provide access to the community to the waterfront is to move the CSO and allow us to shift our project back towards the road and west. Any questions?
Mr. Agulasto.
I think that was my primary question as it relates to this paper, though I do think that there are questions that the council is essentially being asked to deliberate at this moment. Clearly, moving the CSO is a step towards a preferred development by the landowner.
Yes. May I just add that, in fact, we got a plan of development for the development of this property one year ago, and we've been waiting on the CSO to be approved so that we could get under construction. So we have a plan of development in hand, allowing us to build a building by right on this piece of property.
And my point was going to be more about the, the fact that this is what the property owner's preference is, is to move the CSO for a more preferred development option. The 2009 master plan that has been referenced has two scenarios.
Yes.
One is a plan of development, the other one is a plan of preservation and open space.
Correct.
The master plan is not clear and it leaves two paths. And I'm not quite certain I understand why you, why the city would choose to go down one path with the developer and then also say, well, we're interested in negotiating the property for acquisition for, for open space. I think you can't, at some point, you have to make a decision. I'm either going down the left-hand lane or I'm going down the right-hand lane. And in this instance, we're being asked to make a decision because I don't think anybody would spend their money to move a CSO if it were going to be just preserved as, as open space.
Correct.
I think the, the intention behind all this is for development. That then puts the council into the question of whether or not we're going to pursue development on the property or we're going to pursue open space and preservation of the property. That's the decision that council is faced with. What I don't understand is why the council might consider a plan of development for the property when we have spent money to acquire adjoining properties. We have spent money at Lehigh Cement. We're doing demolition there in a couple of weeks. That's city taxpayer money that we've already gone to acquire that property. It's been identified in the master plan. Similarly, with the intermediate terminal property, the city, for all intents and purposes, we have put money behind a Stone Brewery option. They have now acquired that property, the EDA has, for development and there's a whole plan for public space out there. Between those two properties, you have this, you know, this other parcel, the, the USP property. And from what I hear in all these other conversations, oh, well, this is where the Virginia Capitol Trail is going to go. We're going to relocate these streets and close Dock Street. We're going to do all these changes to the experience in that area. And yet, there's this kind of outlier, which is the property that we're talking about right now, which in many ways doesn't relate to all the other efforts and all the other conversations that we've been having. And I'm not quite sure I understand why, at this moment, we're being asked to choose development, preservation. And I don't hear much of the conversation about the preservation, even though we've been having that on surrounding and adjacent properties. So from, from my perspective, I'm not quite sure if the council has yet weighed in on the master plan. And there's nine of us and there's two scenarios. Shouldn't this city council determine which scenario it's going to approve and set that as the ball in motion before millions of dollars are spent on anything? We were told earlier at an informal meeting, well, there's some other parts that still have to be negotiated. Well, you know, it's one of those where you're being asked to make a decision and yet there's still components that are being negotiated. And I hate to say it, but that's the same drumbeat that we've heard repeatedly and we see where it ends up not working out for the city. So, you know, I'll let my colleagues weigh on, weigh in on this, but I think the best course of action would be to continue this paper and to really get a more complete understanding of what is being proposed.
Sir, may, may I respond to that? No.
Sure.
This developer has spent significant money to develop this piece of property already. Their intent is to develop this piece of property. This piece of property, we are allowed by right to develop this piece of property and we have gone through a plan of development process through the city of Richmond, getting reviewed by all the agencies. Although a plan of development does not get reviewed and approved by planning commission or city council, we have done everything we intended to do to develop this piece of property. So we don't, we're not a willing seller. We want to develop this piece of property. And that's, that's where we stand.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Newbill?
Yes. I shared during the informal session and just wanted to share similarly. My colleague is correct. The downtown master plan does contemplate either public open space or development consistent with the underlying zoning as acceptable uses, with the plan expressing a clear interest in preserving open space. That's absolutely true. And so a couple of weeks back, I've now had a series of meetings, the first with several of the constituents in the audience, as well as individuals who are representing civic organizations, as well as preservation organizations. And staff were present in that meeting to talk about and to, to talk about this very thing and to make a request for continuance. Based on the conversation coming out of that first meeting, I did, in fact, make a request to land use to continue as the group I met with that had those representatives indicated that they would be desires of purchase, making an offer for the land. That's exactly what they said. And several of them mentioned the entities that might come together to create those pool of dollars to make an offer. So based on that, I had a subsequent meeting with representatives from that same grouping, but also with the mayor to get some sense of the administration's desire relative and/or interest to purchase. There was an indication that there was not an interest to purchase coming from the administrative side, but what was also indicated in the meeting was that there'd been some conversation with the attorneys for USP. And that, at that time, they had not said yes, but they hadn't said no either. And so with that, what I decided to do was to have further meetings so I can make sure that I've done due diligence relative to making the opportunity for this group who was interested in making an offer for purchase would have that opportunity. So I had a meeting with the developers who expressed they had no interest in sale and that, that was fine, but then I wanted to really have also a sense, I had the developers a sense from the property owners. Are they willing to entertain an offer? Is this property for sale? Which was, you know, the basis of asking for the initial continuance because I didn't have that answer and the group represented here wanted to have that opportunity. So subsequently, and subsequent to the last meeting, we had actually received feedback from the attorneys, USP, and they're present and can speak to that, who indicated that the property is not for sale. And so the basis for the continuance request initially was so that the group could have the opportunity to make that offer. But the attorneys, the, for the property owner, and I really would like to have them speak to that, have indicated the property is not for sale.
Yes, Dr. Newbill, again, Andy Conlon, on behalf of the property owners and the developers. And I can unequivocally say that the property is not for sale. They're not entertaining offers. They don't want to receive an offer and they want to develop this property pursuant to the rights that they have and pursuant to the master plan.
So again, prior to having that as a definitive statement there, that was the intent, to have this be continued so that that group and representative group could make that kind of offer. At this point, again, what they're conveying, they being the developer, as that second offer is present in the plan, in the master plan as an offer. So the continuance, we don't have a willing entity to entertain an offer, so that's the challenge here, relative asking for a continuance.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Gilbert.
Yes. There was mention made earlier that there could be a eight-story building located on the property on a two, two-story platform. Can anyone speak to that relative to the way the property is currently zoned with the location of the CSO pipe where it is?
Well, the CSO pipe.
Excuse me, the CSO easement there.
Yes. There are three buildings on a platform. The platform, as stated earlier, is parking that gets us out of the floodplain. On top of that platform, there are three proposed buildings. One is eight stories, one is actually nine stories, but it's shorter because it has a smaller floor-to-floor height. And then a third building of five stories. All of those buildings fit within the zoning envelope that is allowed under M1. We have designed this under M1 and, in fact, we are significantly lower than what we're allowed to, to build in M1.
Okay. Well, that being said, then that, I take it that the answer to that is yes, and it's even nine stories on top of a two-story parking garage. That is, I want to be perfectly clear, my question is, with the CSO easement as it stands today?
That, no, that is with the relocation of the CSO. That, that building design and our plan of development that has been reviewed and approved is based on the relocation of the CSO.
And what could you do with the CSO pipe where it is now?
If we left the CSO there, then we are forced to push our building to the waterfront, which would cut away our ability, excuse me, our ability to have the linear park along the waterfront. Instead, our building will be out towards the waterfront. We can still do an eight-story, nine-story building in that, in that configuration. It's to the benefit of the community for us to move the CSO so that I can get the building and the platform away from the waterfront and continue the linear park that is proposed.
Well, that, and I, I follow that. What I don't follow is why the building wouldn't be shorter if you, obtaining the same square footage, if you had more land to develop it versus an easement cutting right through the middle of it. That's what I don't understand. That's what I'm not following.
Yeah, there's actually, if we left the CSO in place, we actually have less land to develop.
And I understand that. That's why you have to go up. What I'm not understanding is that it sounds like that both the proposed building or that what you could do now and what you could do if it was moved, that you're not shortening the building at all.
No.
That's what I'm hearing.
In fact, the building, this project actually had gone through several SUP, you know, special use permit, well, desires by the developer previously, which had much bigger buildings. And this drawing that's being passed around now actually will show you that we have come down significantly in the size of this building.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Samus.
Did the developer know when they purchased it about the CSO pipe?
Certainly, a title, a title review could happen and as Mr. Mills had talked about, we could develop the property even with the CSO. But when you talk to the city, and as Mr. Stidell said, it's pretty regular course to be able to move a utility easement such that, to accommodate development. As you can see what's being handed out, we're significantly shorter than what's otherwise allowed. We could develop a greater height and get even more return, but we think that this is a reasonable solution. We think we could also develop as by right, right up to the riverfront, which is contrary to the master plan suggestion. We could develop that and we'd have to build, because it's a narrow piece of land, higher and with more mass, one, one large building instead of three buildings broken up with view sheds in between. So the answer is yes, but this is a better solution than even by right, we think.
And then did Mr. Agulasto, in your com, apologize, Madam President, for asking a city council person a question. Did you ask the question, or maybe I didn't hear the answer, about the existing easement from the previous owner? Did you ask that question?
If, if I did, I'm not sure it was the one that you're thinking.
Okay. Um, there is an existing easement from the previous owner to access the water. What with this movement of our easement would happen to that?
I'm not familiar with the exact dimensions of that easement, but we would have to accommodate that easement. And this is providing access to the waterfront, which this whole point is to provide public access, not just private access for individual property owners to the waterfront, to the river. So this would be able to provide for, consistent with the downtown plan, public access, which includes that private landowner. So it would have to be accommodated if it's, you know, depending on where it is exactly.
But that, that easement wouldn't be for the public. It would just be for the previous landowner, right?
That would be for the, would be for the previous landowner, but he's part of the public, or they are, you know? So they would also have the same access rights.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Agulasto.
This might just be a point of clarification for the, the city clerk's office. When one goes to the ordinance online, and because this is one of those papers that has more documentation than can be readily made available, there's a link to get us to the FTP site, but I couldn't find the, this particular ordinance on the FTP site. And maybe that's just me, but, you know, if, if, I haven't been able to locate all the exact details that are supposed to be made available, I'm not sure I'm at a position to give an affirmative vote tonight and will reiterate my request to continue this.
If it's okay, Madam President, I can have my assistant help Counselor Agulasto find that on the FTP site now.
You need that before?
She can help, she can assist him in pulling it up now, because that paper should be on the site.
Any other comments? Well, we wait for.
Thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity. Again, I just wanted to, and I shared already, and I don't want to be redundant, but to make sure, up to the point that I was informed by the representatives, legal representatives of the parcels, that it was not for sale, then, you know, we were having a different kind of discussion, so.
Mr. Agulasto, we're going to need to move forward.
Yes, ma'am. The issue is a browser issue. You can't access the document from Internet Explorer, but you've got to use Chrome. So I need some time, if I may. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, we're ready to move forward with this, council? Show of hands, let's, show of hands, ready to move forward? Okay. Madam Clerk, can you call the question, please?
Council is voting on item number 22, ordinance number 2015-32 on the regular agenda. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Agulasto?
I'm going to have to say no.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there papers to be amended?
Madam President, I do want to go back to Mr. Collin before one of the statements he did make, that even in this process, it's almost two years before something will transpire with the permitting, et cetera, et cetera. Yes. And so continued conversation can occur.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Madam Clerk, please, are there papers to be amended and continued this evening?
Yes, we have one paper for consideration to be amended and continued, and that is item number 21, ordinance number 2014-199. That's to amend the City Code Section 10-82 to prohibit the use of certain instruments in the training or control of elephants. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page four, line eight, after the word "on," strike the date January 1, 2017, and insert the date June 30, 2018. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper and to continue it to the Monday, April 27 council meeting. Councilwoman Bilalz, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Councilwoman Robertson, will you second that?
Second, Madam Clerk.
Council is voting on the motion to accept ordinance number 2014-199 as amended and to continue it to the Monday, April 27, 2015 council meeting. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That amendment has been accepted. That paper will be before you on Monday, April 27 for consideration.
Thank you. Are there any papers to be expedited?
We have one paper to be expedited, but we also have two other motions to be considered for amendment and voted on tonight. Would you like to move forward with those two? Okay. We will start with item number 26, resolution number 2014-R184. And that is to request the CAO caused to be issued a request for proposals for selecting a development company for the Boulevard site. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page two, line eight, after the word "within," strike the number 30 and insert the number 90. Page two, line 17, after the word "within," strike the number 30 and insert the number 90. Page three, line seven, after the words "request for," strike the words "proposals for" and insert the text "qualifications for prospective contractors, purchases, or tenants regarding the." Page three, line 11, after the word "within," strike the number 30 and insert the number 90. Page three, line 16, after the words "request for," insert the text "qualifications" and any subsequent request for. I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that resolution as read. Councilor Samuels, will you make that motion?
So moved.
Councilwoman Newbill, will you second that?
Second, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Council is voting on the motion to accept the proposed amendment as read to resolution number 2014-R184. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration as amended.
Is that the last paper, Madam Clerk?
No, that's the, it's a motion to be amended now. I'm not sure if council.
Do we have a, one of the patron that would like to discuss?
Yes, and we need to have a public hearing on the paper as well.
Yeah, I'd have a, actually, a motion.
Dr.?
I have a motion to continue for two weeks.
Mr.?
To April 13th, I'm sorry, let me be clear.
To April 13th for item number 26?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I thought that was already.
Oh, no, I still, I have, okay, I have a motion here before me, so I guess that needs to be, okay, have the wrong voting sheet before me. Okay. That paper actually will need to be continued.
Aye.
To April 13th as read. So Mr. Samuels, will you still make that motion?
I would be happy to, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Ms. Newbill, will you continue that amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. Council is voting on the motion to continue resolution number 2014-R184 as amended to the April 13 council meeting. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That amendment has been adopted. That paper will be before you as amended on April 13.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have item number 28, which is resolution number 2015-R9. That is to request the CAO to provide the council and the city planning commission with the writ notification of building permit applications completed for properties identified for acquisition in the city's master plan within seven working days after such applications are completed. The proposed amendment to that paper is as follows. Page one, line six, after the word "identified," insert the word "solely," after the word "cities," insert the word "current." Page two, line six, after the word "identified," insert the word "solely," after the word "cities," insert the word "current." Page two, line 12, after the word "identified," insert the word "solely," after the word "cities," insert the word "current." Page two, line 18, after the word "identified," insert the word "solely," after the word "cities," insert the word "current." I will need a motion to accept the proposed amendment to that paper as presented. Councilwoman Graziano, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Trammell, will you second that?
Second.
Council is voting on resolution number 2015-R9 as amended. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration as amended.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. Agulasto, would you like to give an introduction of the paper?
I'm sorry, Madam President. The question that you've asked me is if I would like to introduce the paper.
Yes.
This is on the master plan one.
This is on number 28, 2015-R9?
To have a discussion and a vote tonight would be ideal. Thank you.
Okay, just wanted to see if you wanted to give a quick overview of what the paper is, no?
No, we can certainly give another overview. Essentially, what the paper does is it identifies the parcels within the existing master plan, and those that were previously identified for acquisition by the city will be notified to the city council members when there are activities being filed by the private entities on those properties that the city has already expressed an interest in acquiring. This is primarily for park real estate as well as transportation right-of-way real estate, and this goes back to the 2000 master plan. And that just allows the city council to be notified, and if there's an initiative by council members to fundraise and try to acquire some of this, it at least alerts us to what those parcels are and gives us a sense of, kind of, a timeline to get acting on it, because sometimes private property owners can't wait forever for the city to determine whether they will buy the land or not. So this will just give some notification. Thank you.
Ms. Graziano?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just to clarify this, this is if the property is already owned by somebody and they pulled a building permit? I'm just trying to make sure that that's what this says. Then we would be notified, but in no way would that notification stop the owner of the property from making those improvements, and then if at some time we wanted to purchase it, we would have to pay for the improvements as well as the property.
That is.
Is that in a nutshell?
That's it in a nutshell, except for just the clarification that if it's not a development that is permissible by the existing zoning.
Right, right.
That it would not.
Well, you couldn't file a permit, I don't think, if you didn't have the zoning.
You could file for a permit, they just might not approve it.
Right. So, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll have a public hearing on the amended paper. Are there any persons who wish to speak in opposition of the paper? Are there any persons who wish to speak in favor of the paper? Bring it back to council for discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Council's voting on item number 28, resolution number 2015-R9 as amended. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, are there papers for expedited consideration this evening?
Yes, we have one paper for expedited consideration, and that is resolution number 2015-R23 to approve an expenditure in the amount of $250 from the council district funds for the ninth district to make a donation for girls for a change for his 2015 date with Dad Dinner and Dance. I will need a motion for expedited consideration of that paper. Vice President Hilbert, will you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Agulasto, will you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Council's voting on expedited consideration of resolution number 2015-R22. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper is before you for consideration.
Well, this is my paper. And so at this point, I want to donate to the young people to make sure that they have the funds that they need to have their date with Dad. And so I think it's an absolutely fabulous, fabulous event. And so I wanted to be a part of making it even more fabulous. And so I thank you all for taking the time on the expedited paper. And so is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in opposition of this paper? Anyone to speak in favor of the paper? Bringing it back to council for discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the question.
Council's voting on resolution number 2015-R22. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
That paper has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move on to the approval of the minutes.
The minutes to be approved are from the Friday, March 6 special meeting and the Monday, January 12 informal, informal meetings. I need a motion to approve those minutes. Councilman Samuels, would you make that motion?
So moved, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Graziano, would you second that motion, please?
Second.
Council is voting on the motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Bilalz?
Aye.
Ms. Graziano?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Agulasto?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Trammell?
Aye.
Ms. Newbill?
Aye.
Vice President Hilbert?
Aye.
President Mosby?
Aye.
Thank you.
Those minutes have been approved.
Awesome. Let's move on to the reports and announcements, starting with Mr. Bilalz.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of announcements, since we're not back here till April 13. Several Monument Avenue-related events. The Monument Avenue 10K is this Saturday, the 28th, which means downtown in Monument will be quite the challenge to get across for a while. And then the Easter on Parade is Sunday, April 5, down in Mr. Samuels' district. And I will be having a town hall meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM. It's been moved to Mary Munford because unfortunately, there was some plaster in the ceiling of the Albert Hill Auditorium where we usually meet that fell on the seats, luckily, anybody who was there. And they're not sure when they're going to be able to fix it. So the meeting will be held at Mary Munford Cafeteria tomorrow. There's already an event booked in the Mary Munford Auditorium, so we will not be serving food, but we will be meeting in the cafeteria tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bilalz. Ms. Graziano?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that Oxford Civic Association is going to have their annual meeting on April 7. It's a Tuesday at St. Luke's Lutheran Church at 6:30. So I hope everyone in Oxford will attend. Mr. Bilalz mentioned Easter. I would just say, hope that everybody has a safe and happy Easter. And I would be remiss if I did not give my best wishes to my fellow councilperson, Mr. Agulasto, on his upcoming exciting event, which would be his wedding. Good luck to you. I know we all feel that way.
Mr. Samuels, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Samuels.
Except I haven't turned on my microphone. First off, I'd like to ditto Councilman Bilalz's comments on Easter on Parade and the Monument Avenue 10K. Every year for the 10K and especially the marathon, we get irate emails or phone calls on Monday and Sunday saying, "We didn't know this was happening." I encourage everyone to pay attention. It's a fairly well-publicized event. If you're online, you've undoubtedly seen Mr. Agulasto, Mr. Bilalz in my posts about it. And we hope everyone is prepared for six miles of smiles. The Robinson Street Association will be meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at Retreat Hospital. Carver Area Civic Improvement League will be meeting on March 31 at 7:00 PM. Carver Area Civic Improvement League will be meeting on March 31st at 7:00 PM, and on April 6, both the Fan District Association and the Monument Avenue Preservation Society have meetings scheduled. If you need me, I'm still liaison-less, so you're welcome to call my cell phone, 804-690-0898, or my office, 646-6532. It's through the magic of technology, you've been forwarded to my cell phone. So please have patience with me over the next few weeks as we work through this tribulation, but soon we'll be back up and running. Thank you, Ms. Mosby.
You're welcome. Ms. Agulasto?
Thank you. We have a busy schedule for the next couple of weeks, and I just highly encourage all of my civic association and neighborhood folks to get involved. Tomorrow evening on the 24th, the Oregon Hill Neighborhood Association is going to be meeting at 7:00 PM at the Williamburg Community House, and they will be reviewing a presentation regarding the proposed rezoning of Trediger Green, and this will affect what number of events and the type of curfews will be eligible for that facility as Venture Richmond and the city move forward. And that meeting will be tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. On this Thursday, the 26th of March, from 5 till 7:00 PM, city staff from the Planning and Development Review Office will be holding a meeting, and I will be attending at Benford Middle School. The purpose of the meeting is to talk about the Uptown, Main, and Cary Street corridor between Harrison and Meadow and the UB zoning, that's Urban Business Zoning and Parking Overlay District. This impacts what types of businesses can operate, how many off-street parking spaces they would be required to have, and what other types of development is, could come into that corridor. And this is a very important meeting regarding updates and proposed changes to the UB zoning and Parking Overlay District. This is between Harrison and Meadow. It pretty much impacts anybody who lives on Floyd, West Main Street, West Cary Street, and I believe even parts of Parkwood, and that would be from the 1100 block all the way to the 2000 block. On April 1st, at 6:30 PM, we will be hosting our 5th District meeting. This will be at the Patrick Henry School of the Science and Arts in the auditorium. We're very thankful for the school opening up their facility for us to have this meeting for the first time there in the Woodland Heights community. The meeting is open to all 5th District residents. The school is located at 3411 Sims Avenue. We've got a great agenda. Obviously, we ask that citizens come with questions and comments for me to be reviewed at the end of the meeting. However, we will have our new police chief, Alfred Durham, there, and we are looking forward to his introduction to the community. We also will have a presentation from representatives from Richmond 2015 regarding the bike routes and some of the changes that they have made in an attempt to alleviate some of the pressures put on our neighborhoods, particularly the Oregon Hill folks, who I think at one point were looking at everyday impacts from that race. And then we'll also have our code enforcement director, John Walsh, attending to talk about code enforcement efforts and the changes that are occurring in his office, and also how to work with code enforcement on addressing some of the issues within our neighborhoods. Monday, April 6, the Hull Street Midlothian Civic Association will be meeting at Conanea Christian Church at 3600 McRan Street. That meeting begins at 7:00 PM, and again, we encourage folks from the Swansboro, Swansboro West neighborhoods to come out and hear about what's going on in the neighborhood. On Tuesday, April 7, the Uptown Civic Association will be meeting, and there's obviously some discussion about the UB zoning in Uptown, but also some special use permits that are coming through that might require community engagement. Then finally, as Kathy Graziano mentioned, I do have some personal obligations that will keep me away from the city council meeting on Monday, April 13. This will be the first council meeting that I will miss, but it's for good reasons, and I ask my constituents to always notify me, and I will share my comments and thoughts on anything on the agenda that evening with my colleagues and ask for their support on issues before us. Always, please, give me a phone call or an email if there's something that I can assist with, and you can follow us on Facebook or Twitter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agulasto. Ms. Robertson, you're still writing. Are you ready? Ms. Trammell?
Thank you, Madam President. This Saturday, March 28, from 2:00 PM, yeah, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, there's going to be an Easter egg hunt, and it's free, and it's going to be held at the Maury Street Playground and Park. The Richmond Police Department will be there, the Mounted Squad, I think Mounted Police, I'm sorry. That's a good one. Sorry. Also, the K-9 unit will be there, the Fire Department, the EMS. Also, there's been a lot of other invited guests. I don't want to speak for them, because I don't know if they're going to be there. But anyway, please come. Again, it is going to be Saturday, March 28, from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It's the Third Annual Easter Egg Hunt and Celebration, and it's free. And again, that is this Saturday, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Maury Street Playground. Also, this Saturday, if you have a pet, if you have a dog or a cat, you can take them to 507 East Southside Plaza, that's at Southside Plaza Shopping Center, and that's this Saturday, March 28, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and you can take your pet there, and you can get free shots. They can get a free Stumpfer shot or Parvo shot, and we do know that a lot of times puppies do contact Parvo, and they don't make it. Also, you can buy your license there, this Saturday, and it's only $10, because all dogs and cats must have license. And again, they can also get their rabies shot, and that's only $10. Again, that will be this Saturday, March 28, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and again, they're going to get a free Stumpfer shot and a Parvo shot, and it's from the Richmond Animal Care Control, and it's rabies clinic. I know that I've been getting a lot of calls in reference to the trailer parks. We are not trying to close up the trailer parks. That is not, that is not what is, what's going on in the city. All the city inspectors want to do, code enforcement and even administration, they want to make sure that these trailer parks are safe for the children, for the families, and they want to make sure that they're up to code. And the main two things is electrical problems and also to make sure they have running water. And I just want to say that, and myself, I'm not there to close up any, any homes or any, you know, because if you put them out, where are they going to go? We need to make it, make the landlord or make the owners of these trailer parks, make them make sure that they are safe and up to code and abide by the laws. That's on the books, because it is a public safety issue. And if you have any problems or any questions, you can call John Walsh, and his number is 646-6052, 646-6052. Is that, Lou, that's not Steve Skinner's number, is it? Steve is 646-0620, right?
646-6052.
Okay, I want to make sure I give out his, what I did last time. Make sure I give out John's number. All right, thank you. So if you have any questions, call John Walsh, and he would be more than happy to talk to you. Tomorrow's our public safety meeting, and it will be held here in the council chambers, and that is tomorrow at 5:00. And we're going to be discussing street closing when you have special events, because we know that a lot of times the churches have to endure all the traffic and things like that, and the ones that come to worship, they're not able to get to the church because the streets are closed. So we're going to be discussing that tomorrow here in the council chambers at 5:00 PM. Also, we're going to be discussing the 911, and that's in reference to what happens when you call 911 and the call doesn't get answered. So I think that the administration has invited the police chief to come to the meeting tomorrow, and also, I think, the police chief in Chesterfield County was invited to come, and it's no disrespect to any of our police officers, it's just something happened really bad last week where there was an accident where a car hit a van, and the van, the church van, was flipping up in the air, and when it came back down, the children and the people on the bus was being thrown out of the van. And we were all trying to call 911, and I guess maybe because of high volume of calls, the 911 was not answered until you maybe went about 10 other, about 10 feet away from where I was standing and got Richmond 911, who was able to get the police officers there in the scene within a few minutes, and then Chesterfield police officers showed up. And I want to thank those Richmond police officers and those Chesterfield County police officers for working so good together, because it was chaos, it was a lot of children that were hurt, a lot of the parents were very upset because they didn't know how bad their little children were injured, and also the parents were injured too. And again, all they were trying to do was go to church, doing a bus going to church. So I just want to say thank you to the Richmond police officers and Chesterfield police officers and EMS and firefighters that came there and just took, just got a hold to the scene right away and asked the ones that were not involved to please step aside. Let's see, what else? Oh, a lot of people asking about our meeting. Our meetings will start back next month, next month, that's April 16, Thursday, April 16, at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Satellite, and I'll tell you all more about that at our next, when we have our next council meeting. This right here is your free smoke alarm. If you call 646-1526, 646-1526, these firefighters will come to your home, they will install this smoke alarm for you for free. It doesn't cost a penny, and right now, it's probably the only thing in the city of Richmond that's free. So take advantage of that, and if you can't remember the number, honey, you can always go to the nearest fire station, go to your nearest fire station, tell them who you are, tell them where you live, and ask them to come to your house and put the smoke alarm up for you for free. They will not leave this, they will put it up for you for free. And also, if you need a battery, they'll put the battery in the smoke alarm, they will not leave the battery, they'll put it up for free. And we know that these smoke alarms, they do save your life. And also, our President of the United States of America, Barack Obama, has said everyone should have a working free smoke alarm in your home, in your business, in your church. All you got to do is tell those firefighters, and they will come there, and they would be more than happy to put up the smoke alarm. If you have any questions, you can call my home. My home number's 233-7382, that's 233-7382, and my personal cell, you can call that, 240-5050, 240-5050. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trammell. Dr. Newbill?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to extend an invitation to all 7th District East End residents to join me for our next 7th District Community Meeting, which will be held on Monday, March 30, 6:00 PM, at the East District Center located at 701 North 25th Street. Our special guest will be our new police chief, Alfred Durham, and he'll share with us his plan of action for the RPD. We'll also have updates on the East End Churchill North Transformation. Our school board representative, Mr. Donald Coleman, will join us for that meeting as well. Again, extend an invitation to all residents to come out next Monday, March 30, 6:00 PM, East District Center, 701 North 25th Street, for our next 7th District Community Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newbill. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Madam President. There are a couple of meetings that are coming up in the 6th District that I'd like for the citizens to be aware of. The first one will take place on March 25. There will be a meeting at the Ann Hardy Plaza, and it's a community-wide meeting to update the community on a lot of activity that is planned within the 6 points of the Meadow Bridge Business District in the community. There is special use development of the Brooklyn Park Housing Community for senior citizens. In addition to that, we will have discussions about what's going on with the St. Elizabeth School that is being redeveloped, redeveloped for senior housing as well. There is also a new organization of the business owners in the Meadow Bridge Carter that are meeting, and we'll have discussions on plans and activities that are being proposed to put the city's economic development strategy in place for that community area. There will also be an update on what's happening with the roundabout in the 6 points. Also, on April 7, there will be a meeting at Ann Hardy as well. This is the Third Annual Mayor's Volunteer Recognition Event, which is where we bring together several volunteers from throughout the city that provide services for residents within different communities, not only in the 6th District, but other districts will be participating as well. We are recruiting additional volunteers, so we would appreciate it if you would give my office a call at 646-7964 if you're interested in providing valuable services to assist our community, and most likely, a lot of seniors will be provided services on that day. And that will be on April 7, and the meeting place is at Ann Hardy Park, 3300 Block, 1st Avenue, and it will start at 9:30 in the morning. Also, we decided that we're going to have two town meetings in the 6th District because our district is so, extends from the Henrico County line to just about the Chesterfield County line, and so between Southside and Northside, our meetings will be held on Northside always on the first Tuesday of the month at Hoshkis Field at 7:00. This first meeting will address the citations that have been issued, codes, housing code citations that have been issued in the community. We've had over 150 citations issued. We've found out that of those 150, only 25, which is still a huge number, are occupied units and the others are vacant units. We're doing a follow-up strategy with the city to assist those with the code violation as well as how we address the number of blighted units that, housing units that are in the community area. We have also extended an invitation to a new chief of police, who is also a resident of the 6th District, to be a part, for sharing his plans for the city of Richmond as it relates to the department in addressing crime. So that meeting will be on April 7 at Hoshkis Field, and it'll begin at 7:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President Hilbert?
Thank you, Madam President. The next 3rd District meeting will take place this Wednesday, March 25, at 6:00 PM at Partnership for Families Northside located at 800 West Graham Road. The agenda will be a report from Sector 412 Officer in Charge, Lieutenant Chris Gleason, and I do want to take this time to recognize and thank Lieutenant Gleason and the officers of Sector 412 for the largest reduction in crime in any sector in the city. The city has 12 sectors within four police precincts, and we congratulate Lieutenant Gleason and the officers that work in for Sector 12 for, again, the largest reduction in crime in the city. We'll also give a community service award to Ms. Marty Williams, who was unable to attend last council meeting. A community service award for her Marty Bra's program. We are going to have a presentation from Thad Williams, the Director of Community Wealth Building, and so we appreciate him coming out and letting us know about the anti-poverty measures and wealth building within the community that the city administration is undertaking. And we'll also have questions and hopefully answers about this, the proposed budget from Mayor Jones and any, any changes that you would like to see. I'd like to hear back from you on that, or if you're supportive of it as presented, either, either way, really would appreciate your input. Did want to reiterate again that the deadline for submitting applications for tax relief is March 31, which is a week from tomorrow. Please contact 646-7000 for additional information. If you'd like to be on our email distribution list for the district, please send your email address to lisa.townes@richmondgov.com, or you can call her at 646-6055. If you're contacting me via email, please be certain that you are using my City of Richmond email address, which is chris.hilbert@richmondgov.com. Thank you so much, and again, I want to extend our congratulations and best wishes to Councilman Agulasto and his fiancee, soon-to-be-wife, and, and a happy Christmas, excuse me, happy Christmas, happy Easter to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Hilbert. 9th District, please be advised that the March and April May District Newsletter has gone out. If you have not received yours yet, it is on its way. April 6, we are having our youth celebration, and it will be at the Broad Rock Baptist Church at 5106 Wormsley Boulevard from 11 to 3:00 PM. That is a budget session meeting that we will have here. I will not be here. Mr. Hilbert will be here in my place. That is when the children have their Easter break. I can't control that week, but I, it's my responsibility to me to do something for the children, and so that's that day. And so I'll be there on the 6, from 11 to 3. April 11, that Saturday, we'll still be hanging out, because they're out for that week, at the Hull Street Skate Land from 4 to 7:00 PM. So you can bring your kids by, and you can stay and hang out with us enjoying that week of Easter vacation. The next regularly scheduled district meeting will take place on Thursday, April 16, at Goodwill 6301 Midlothian Turnpike. That meeting starts at 6:00 PM. As always, I'm concerned about your- As always, I'm concerned about your needs in the district, and I can be reached at You can also reach my liaison, yasiah.harris@richmondgov.com. His number is 804-912-6465, and my number is 804-363-5093. Once again, Happy Easter to everyone, and congratulations on your personal matter, Mr. Agulhas. All right, Madam Clerk, introductory papers for the evening.
Madam President, the introduction papers are as follows. Ordinance Number 2015-79 to amend and re-adjourn city code for the purpose that fiscal and economic impact statements be submitted to council upon the introduction of certain economic development projects to be funded or supported by the city. Finance and Economic Development Standing Committee, April 23rd at 2:00 PM, council public hearing, April 27th. Ordinance Number 2015-80 to amend and re-adjourn city code and to amend and re-adjourn the fees set forth in Appendix 8 for the purpose of authorizing the installation of certain wireless communication facilities on alternative support structures with the building permit. Planning Commission, May 4th at 1:30 PM, council public hearing, May the 11th. Resolution Number 2015-R23 to amend the resolution previously amended for the purpose of reporting a council member to serve on the Maggie L. Walker Initiative Citizens Advisory Board. Council public hearing, April 13th. Resolution Number 2015-R24 to approve $500 from the council district funds for the 6th District to make a donation to Girls for Change 2015, date with Dad Dinner and Dance. Council public hearing, April 13th. Resolution Number 2015-R25 to take the position that no child in the Commonwealth should suffer from food insecurity and to express support for the efforts to address childhood hunger in Virginia. Education and Human Service Standing Committee, April the 9th at 5:00 PM, council public hearing, April 13th. Resolution Number 2015-R26 to support the archaeological research at 212 North 18th Street, formerly the Seabrook Tobacco Warehouse. Land Use Housing and Transportation Standing Committee, April 21st at 3:00 PM, council public hearing, April 27th. Madam President, that concludes the reading of the new legislation.
With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Well, 2 hours, 10 minutes of the time we started, all present tonight. I started about 6:05, had the awards and presentations. Award to state basketball champions from George Worth High School, and several other awards as well. Then we got to citizens' comment period, follow-up consent agenda. That took about 2 minutes after they read all the papers into the record. 2 minutes, and it was approved 9-0. The one item that took the most time tonight was on the regular agenda. This was talking about relocating the wastewater facilities. In other words, it was a 6-foot sewer pipe. They want to relocate that, and that would grant right-of-way recreational easement to be used as a segment of the Virginia Capitol Trail. That took a lot of discussion, in fact, almost 3/4 of an hour. We had 7 people speaking, 6 people speaking against it, but what they really wanted to do was they wanted a continuance so they could have more time to discuss this. One person speaking in favor, actually it was 1, actually it was 2 people, really. One was the architect. They talked back and forth. When all was said and done, 45 minutes later, the vote was approved by an 8 to 1 margin, the 1 dissenting vote coming from Councilmember Agulhas. We have one paper that was amended and then voted on tonight, and this was amending Resolution 2015-R9. Now, this one requests the CAO to provide the council and the city planning commission with written notification of building permit applications completed for properties identified for acquisition in the city's master plan within seven working days if any such applications are completed. Now, this is for the purpose of clarifying which properties and which version of the master plan request for written notification applies. That one, a little confusion on that one, but they got that thing straightened out, and it was approved by a 9-0 vote. Then we got to the reports from council, the introduction of papers, and we are adjourned. It'll be 3 weeks, actually, because we'll be off. We have 5 Mondays this month, so we'll be getting back with you on the 13th of April. It'll be after Easter. The youngsters will have already had their spring break, they'll be back in class. So please be extra careful when you're out there because the warm weather, the youngsters are carefree, they'll be running around. Watch where you're driving, take care, and enjoy your Easter holiday. We'll see you again on the 13th of April for Gavel to Gavel. I'm Dick Harmon saying goodnight.